Alright, we're back with another episode of the Young Black Suburbans. I'm here with Tony Devine, council member from Bristol Borough, how you doing?
I'm doing good, Tim, what's going on?
Doing great, glad to have you on the show.
Glad to be here.
We have a history, I've been a business owner in Bristol Borough for about two years now, two and a half years, it's hard cuz I can't count these COVID months, you know, but, and ever since I've been here, me and you have been connected with each other, doing different things throughout the community, so I'm glad to have you.
Yeah, I'm looking, like I said before, I'm looking forward to doing a lot more stuff. So this year, you know, we could, you know, kinda explode and do some big stuff for the community, so.
Definitely, and it's always good to have those kinda partnerships where people are like-minded. Me, I run my business around community, I try to do as much as I can, but when you have someone that also is like that, that also is already in the community, it just makes it that much easier. You are from the community that you serve, let's talk about your upbringing a little bit.
Well, the best part about it is, I am where I grew up, right? So, right outside that window is Elm Street, where I grew up. So on that street, there were probably about twenty-three row homes on both sides. So it's a dead-end street, and that street is what made me who I am, made everybody, like that is, that is our gang, that is, like, those people are just as close to me now as they've ever been. So it's like, in that community where we grew up, everybody took care of each other. So like, when you learn things, you learned them from that street.
Right.
You learned everything that you wanted to learn through those people, cuz the older generation of people, they don't do it no more. This is the frustrating part that I see with, with, you know, moving toward the future. Everyone is kinda based on their own, you know what I mean? Everyone is just worried about themselves. Where we grew up, the dudes that were older than us took care of us. We took care of the next generation, just, you know, you connected, bonded, you had that fellowship, that relationship with the younger generation. And, you know, till this day, I mean, there's dudes that are like sixty-five, seventy years old, and we still talk about Elm Street, so.
You know, I heard that Elm Street is, was a popular street from one of your older friends, Jerome. I don't know if you remember Jerome?
Yeah.
Um, he's still right here.
Yeah.
He came and dropped some toys off at the toy drive, and he was explaining to me about how that was the area, how you, and you have a brother, used to play basketball.
Everything, it's all we did, all day.
That's all he did every day.
Listen, we could talk about, a whole podcast on just the games that we played.
Let's talk about, well.
Listen, here are some of the best games, this is how you'd know when you grew up on a great street, right? You grow up and we talk about different games. So, if we had to have one of the games that we would be synonymous with Elm Street would be called Hide the Belt. Did you ever play Hide the Belt?
Nah.
Hide the Belt is a great game. Hide the Belt is, everybody on the street will go and look for the biggest belt that they had in the house. Whoever had the biggest belt, they come out and go, ah, we want this belt. So whoever had the belt first that we were gonna use, they would take the belt, run into the alley, and you would hide the belt in the alley. Everyone else would wait and they would say, hot peas and butter, that means it was ready for the people on the street that were playing to come. So we all wait at the beginning of the alleyway.
Right.
Soon as the person said they was ready to go, we run through the alleyway, and then you just be like this. Everyone's looking for the belt, it would be like, cold, oh, he's freezing, toes.
Right, right, right.
And then when somebody would get warm, they're like, oh, he's warm. So then everyone would get closer, be like, oh, he's hot, he's burning, he's steaming. And then you see people walking back out of the alley. And as soon as whoever got the belt, they found the belt, got to whip you with the belt till you get out of the alley.
Oh, man.
That was, that was our game.
Wow, that's like real homegrown, I never, I never heard of that game. I'm from the other side of the track, you know, Fearless Hills.
Yep.
Um, we had like Man Hunt.
Yeah, we played Man Hunt, yeah.
But, catch, what was it, what'd you call it?
It's called Hide the Belt.
Hide the Belt? That's.
Hide the Belt, yeah.
That's intense.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you and your brother are both big basketball players?
Yeah, we was, he was, my brother is, you know how it goes down the train? Like, my older brother was a good athlete, very, he was more explosive than athletic. To me, athleticism is fluidity, like being able to move. And then, it was me, I love bad, but my youngest brother was the best athlete.
Okay.
He just, his problem was, he just didn't have the explosiveness. So like, to me, I was like right in the middle, I was athletic and still explosive, you know what I mean? But, as a whole, I mean, that's all we did all day, just play sports. Here's another great game, you talk about working on your athleticism. The things that we did on my street made us the athletes that we were. We still had played another game, it was called Out. Here's a game of Out. So you got two sets of row homes on each side of the street. And we had this one porch, this dude's name was Res, old Italian dude, he was like a drunk and he was nasty, like we were like afraid of him, everybody was afraid of him, but he had the best porch for outs.
Right.
And what you would do, we have a tennis ball that we would go get from over here at the tennis courts, when they were tennis courts, and you would have to throw that tennis ball, you line up, you had to throw that tennis ball off the edge of the porch, the edge.
Right.
And then on the other side, you had your person on defense in the gutter, and then you had another one on the sidewalk.
Right.
So if you didn't hit that on the edge, you'd be a ground ball, you'd just be out, boom, gone. The key was to hit it off the edge to get it in the air. So if you hit it on the porch on the other side, it's a double. If you hit the, if you hit the gutter, it's a triple, and on the roof was a home run. So you worked on hand-eye coordination, didn't know it.
Right, right, so were you winging the ball?
Oh, we tried, yeah, it was great though, we had teams, we had, and that's what would lead into another thing we should do, would be right up your alley, we used to have boxing on our street. So we fought in, on our age level and our weight level on our streets. We had like thirty-five, forty kids on the street.
Right. Did you just have gloves?
Yeah, the older dudes, this is, you're gonna love this story. So the older dudes would be our trainers, right? They were probably like fifteen, they were trainers, they'd bring us around, we used to run around the block, put us on trash bags.
But there's no gyms around?
No, but then we built, what you call, we built a ring in an alley. We built a ring out of old wood, strings, and we also had a belt. We made a belt, listen, I'm telling you, we had, it was made out of cardboard, and used glue and glitter, and each level had a belt.
Wow.
So it would be, I mean, we had a great.
Nice little team.
Uh, great, great, great. We didn't have to leave, everything was on our street, everything.
Right, Bristol Borough is a close, tight-knit, you know, community.
It used, not as much anymore, cuz that gets frustrating for me, yeah.
For me, coming from the outside, being here for two years, I've never experienced this type of community, maybe cuz I'm a business owner now, maybe that might be why. But, uh, where I've been living for ten years, we not talking to each other the way, I know more people in Bristol Borough than I do in my own neighborhood right now. That's the closeness that I feel when you're here. I'm helping out, advertise for another business down the street, that business returns helping out me. Some kid down the street needs help, we talk to each other, that is closeness to me. You grew up with that, um, for me, it's something that, um, is, is, I can see it because I didn't have it in my community the same way. Um, and that's something that really draws me to this area. Um, if I don't move back to the other side of the tracks, I'm gonna come right here.
Uh, that would be great, listen, here's, this is what this place is missing, right? Because as we get older now, like, it's being spread out, it's just like the city, right? Like, when people moved out of the city, they moved into the suburbs, those areas became distant, like suburbs became like, they're, I don't know how to explain it, they're, they're less connected to each other, you know what I mean? And the further out you move from the city, the further out disconnected you are. So like here, it's the same thing, as people move out and you get new people in, it's, you gotta bring good people in. So somebody like you, somebody who has, you know, kinda the pedigree that you have, the influence and wanting to do positive things, that's what the community needs. You know what I mean, we need more people like you, and, and that leads in.
This is about you, Tony, go on.
No, 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 this is, because, because what it is, is, it is about all of us, right? There's no, like, to me, it's not about me ever.
Right, right, right.
Like, you can see by my wardrobe, you know what I mean?
And, and not to cut you off, but this is the thing, like we, I said, we've done events before, and it's hard to get you to take a picture with us, uh, so we can show people that you did it. You know, I'm trying to give you credit, cuz you just wanna do the work.
That's it.
Um, and, and, and I noticed that before. But me on the outside, you also deserve the credit as well, you're fighting hard for what you believe in. I, I see it all the time, uh, on social media and stuff like that.
Oh, it's interesting.
And, I'm the kinda person who, I believe that there's two sides to every story, that, you know, if we listen to this person and we listen to that person, that maybe we can come to the middle. But politics ain't always that way, is it?
Oh, no, politics is definitely, here's, here's the thing about that whole concept, is to me, I've built up a different way of looking at things. Like, to me, I've built my whole life creating relationships, creating based on they know who I am, right? So like, to me, like, when you feel, like, I've known myself since I was probably eleven, twelve years old. And I think that most people are continuing to learn themselves, we all grow, we all change, we all, you know, learn new stuff. But I, at my core, I knew who I was, ten, eleven, twelve years old, no doubt about it. So like, I've always had a strong sense of self. So like, to me, all these relationships that I've built, talked about, always been honest, been always the person that brought people up, brought them into the circle, you know, take them under your wing, cuz that's how I was dealt with, that's how we grew up. So like, to me, it's different to me, it's like, there's not always two sides of the story for me. If there's somebody I trust, I believe in, like, to me, if I talk to Antoine Lovelace, his side of the story is my side of the story.
Right, right, right.
I trust him wholeheartedly. So anything that he tells me, I'm not, I don't need to go listen to somebody else. He sees things the way I see things, he knows how I see things. So like, when it's said, I know it's, I know it's factual, I know it's true. You know what I mean, like, both sides of the story is where you're brand-new to a situation. Like, if I come into a situation and I'm, exactly. And, and, and I, believe me, I appreciate, anywhere that I go into a place where I'm new to a situation, I'm listening to everything, right? I listen to everything, and it's once you get to know people and what they're about, and it's just over and over again, like, you, you see it, it's, it's, it's in them, I can't change who I am.
What, what was the driving factor for you to get involved so deeply into your community?
The funny thing about it is like anything, it's cuz I'm a doer, right? So when I hear people can, I never had no problem, I didn't never wanna get involved in politics. I was never considered myself a politician.
Right.
But when I listen to people around, people complain, right? Even my wife, like, my wife gets mad cuz I tell her, I say, listen, you're the reason I even got involved. So when you complaining, the reason I got involved is cuz you complained. You tell me this and that, that ain't right, this ain't right. So like, to me, that motivates me, if you tell me there's a problem, I'm gonna try to fix it. That's my nature.
Right.
So that's what politics was to me, so I started to see things where people were not being treated fairly. It wasn't just, you know what I mean, it was more like, you're gonna do what I tell you to do. And I've never worked from that point, like, even coaches, I, I've never respected coaches that, that just directed me with no reasoning, you know what I mean? So I always needed, tell me what's going on, don't tell me, just do, I wanna know, why do I gotta do it, and how is this better for the group, for the, yeah, exactly.
Um, and, is that something that you still see that's an issue right now?
Oh, it's a total issue here, this is, and, and I'll put it in a nutshell. And, and this is what's hard for people to see, now, I don't, I don't wanna make this political, you cut me off one, yeah. You cut me off whenever you want, cuz I'm an open, I'm an open book.
So look, it's like this, I, I asked you to be on the show cuz we have a relationship. We do good stuff together, uh, we always look out for charity and we, we are like-minded. If other people see this and they have something to say about it, they're more than welcome to build a relationship with me too. They're more than welcome to sit down and just like you said, you see, uh, people for who they are, you believe that Antoine Lovelace, what he says to you, uh, is the truth. I have the same thing with people too, so I can see if someone sits down on my couch and they're not being real. Hey, and not just me, the whole community can see.
Yeah.
Um, so this is your chance to speak your mind, this doesn't mean that somebody else won't have their chance to do it too. Um, and then the community can decide if it comes down to that. But I knew, asking you to be on the show, that, I, I knew when I was getting into it.
Yeah, 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 I, listen, I just wanna make sure, because like you said before, you're a businessman, you know what I mean? So like, what you're saying, I agree with, cuz you give everybody an opportunity.
Exactly, and, and, you know, we've had conversations where I'm like, oh, you know, I'm cool with that person, you know, they haven't done that to me, you know, but your experiences are your experiences, so that's what we're talking about.
Which leads into another thing.
Go ahead.
And this is another thing that I laugh at, because it's like, when people tell me, your experience is your experience, the hardest part, right, is to learn through experience, instead of learning through just people being able to give you that information, right? That, that's the hardest way to learn, the most, you know.
Especially in a time where we don't know what to believe.
Mm-hmm, you're right about that, and, and this is the thing about it, is like, what people don't understand, and, and it goes with politics. People, they wanna get on me, like, it's kinda crazy, it's like, I know where my heart is. I'm there to give people what's really going on, this is what's going on.
Right.
I'm telling you cuz I'm there.
Right.
And when they, when the powers that be don't wanna give somebody who's an elected official information, there's an issue.
There's an issue, right.
So when I bring these out to people, you still got doubters, oh, what are you, what are you talking about? You're always causing trouble, no, I'm not causing trouble, cuz I'm not, I'm not trying to be anything. I'm there to give you information, do you want transparency, I'm gonna give it to you.
Right.
Do you want sugarcoat and fluff, go somewhere else, because I'm, my vocabulary's not built for, for giving you all the cute words and all the.
Yeah, you're not here to water down.
No, I'm not.
And I have that issue, uh, with my, what, what I do, um, sometimes, and for me, it's, it's not sometimes, it's something that I just learned, I ain't gonna lie.
Have we learned?
Because before I became a businessman, I didn't, you know, I didn't go to school for this or anything like that, I didn't know what it took, um, it's something that I developed over the time where, you know, I had to say like, look, this is how it is. If you don't like it, you can get off the train, or you can get on and ride it out. And, and in politics though, um, there's, there's a vote, it's a democracy, uh, and I see a lot of the things that go on, like I, we were talking about social media, that go on between you and some of the citizens of this town.
Yeah.
Um, do you wanna elaborate on, you know, some of the back and forths and?
Yeah, absolutely, I would love to.
Cuz, I don't, I know you personally, a lot of these people are keyboard warriors, you know? I used to call them eye thugs.
Yeah. I like that, eye thugs, yeah.
Eye thugs, um, and they're people that say things to people behind their keyboard, and they won't say it in front of their face.
This is, this is how, like, to me, I'm very strange, in a sense that, like, I, I believe in certain things. Like, I still have a running, like, I'm gonna be fifty years old, dude, I'm gonna be fifty, I still have a running list of my top five friends, that's an ongoing list. And as those people pass or lose or fail the test for me, they come, they leave that order, and they go out.
Right.
And it's refreshed, and when you lose people, like, I just lost, uh, one of my best friends, Charlo, his name's Charlo Marin, Jose Marin, was another Elm Street, we grew up together. Anything that you ever, great human being, lost his life from drinking and partying, whatever he was doing, and he never wanted to go to the doctor, that's besides the point, so, these are, these are great people, and I had lists like that. So like, to me, when I'm bad, I got certain things that I do, like, so we're talking about eye thugs, I love that. Eye thugs and keyboard tough guys, and like, to me, I, like, I don't consider myself like a tough guy, but I'm not gonna, like, for some, I can't accept any of the stuff that people put on there. It just goes, I don't know why, it just goes against my grain, but I realize at the end of the day, it's on the computer, so I don't care.
Right.
It's the same way, like, to me, if I'm on the street and somebody says something, I'm gonna fight for probably two or three reasons. The first reason I'm gonna fight is if somebody thinks they can kick my ass. Whether they can or not, but if they make it to the point where they, they're making it known that they're gonna kick my ass, they're gonna have to prove it. So that's, that's one. The second one is, if I'm in a car and somebody's doing shit in a car, doing stuff, that don't bother me, because they don't know who I am. Now, if it was somebody in the car that knew me, that was doing the stuff to test me or to whatever, then I got a problem.
Meet them where they're at.
Right, exactly, and then the third one is if, I mean, family's a whole different thing, that's a, I don't even count that, that's my number one anyway, like, if that's a situation with my family, there'll be issues or problems. But, the third one is just, the idea of, where, what is it that people wanna do? Or they, if they're not channeling, if they're not, if they're in my face and they're killing my space, and it's somebody that isn't like a seventy-year-old guy, or somebody who's not, you know, but there's a real threat, then there's another issue.
There, there's like a difference between that and then being elected official and using social media. We see certain people use social media that we all know, not in such a responsible way. Um, and, when you're trying to get the community to trust you, you're, that's, that's always an issue. And it's not always your fault, but you trying to expose something, or you trying to, uh, bring something to light, um, you, we have that social divide.
Yeah.
How do you navigate that as a politician?
I don't.
Yeah, you don't.
I don't, I don't navigate it, I'm a person, I'm not a politician, I'm there, listen. Politics, I understand there's gonna be politics, there's gonna be issues that are gray areas, like, should we, should we use a million dollars to renovate this area and put a thing?
And we're gonna talk more about that.
So like, to me, that is an area, alright, we should talk about that, that's a process, alright. So if we can't do a million dollars, alright, let's talk about five hundred thousand dollars, you know, and then give the reasons why. And the problem is, there is, there is not, that's not politics that we have here, it's an autocrat system. Even though that people, even though people vote, right? There is one person that makes all the decisions. And what people don't realize is, the, the, the council people, or their elected officials in each of their wards.
Right.
So you have four wards, if those people are only going to do what one person says, you, you have an autocrat, that's what's happening, see? And here's the thing, when people get mad at me, because it's, I just tell the truth, everything that I tell, I back up with facts, and people, it shuts them down, but it's still, only certain amount of people listen, right? A lot of people are tuned out, the majority of people are tuned out.
They're already prejudge and pre, have the prenose.
So they don't care, and that's, and that is the problem we talked about. So it leads to, this is what it leads to, it leads to, at the end of the day, if you're taking both sides of the story, and you're listening to one side, and listening to the other side, and you come to an agreement of what's in the middle, that's fine with me, I like that idea.
But you're saying it's not happening.
We don't have that, and this is what I get into battles with people, cuz they don't understand, I'm not there to take over, I don't wanna be in charge, I don't, alls I wanna be able to do is, the people who are elected sit together and communicate. And when they can't, and they do whatever they wanna do to please one person, because they all benefit in some way, I have a problem with it.
Right.
And if most people are seeing to think that, well, it's politics, that's what people do, that's what they do, that's not what I do. I'm not in it for that reason.
Right, and, and I see it's more, you, the things that you have and the things that you bring to the forefront are more community-driven. Um, I don't see you trying to get licenses for buildings or anything like that. What is one of the major things that, you know, tick you off in this community that you want to see change about?
It, it, it's a funny thing that you say ticking off, cuz it's like I'm changing, right? It's like, you become a certain age where, I'm just hitting it now, it's crazy, like, that we're talking about it, is that, you, I'm not as volatile or so dramatic, I, I, it's just, you want what's good for, and I'm at the point now, I'm reserved to the fact that, listen, if you guys don't get it, right? My ward gets it, they, the, the other team, listen, they spend a lot of money, just like in big politics, small politics are very similar, they spend a lot of money and they put out a lot of information.
Right.
And they're able to, to do a lot of things that, yeah, that people can't, but I still won in my ward, which made them sick with, see, that's the kinda stuff that makes me excited, like you're talking about. We get at a certain age where you can't fight anymore physically, cuz you get in trouble. You can't, you can't deal with things in the same way that you would as when you were younger and, because, number one, people are gonna sue everybody now. See, like, to me, I tell people all the time, I say, listen, I got no problem, I've said this before to certain people.
Right.
I said, sign a contract, you, sign a contract and say right now, whatever we do, and that's it, you ain't gonna sue me.
I, I, I can sell tickets.
Yeah, exactly, I said that at a meeting, I did.
Don't bring me up to this.
I did, I said that, I said that to a meeting, I said, listen, somebody came up there, I said, do me a favor, sign a contract, we will fight, we will fight for, for, uh, for our own, uh, charity.
Right.
Whoever wins, all the money that's sold in tickets, will go through the charity.
Right, right, nobody wanna do that.
No, but that's what I'm saying, because they really don't believe, see, that's the other thing, when you fight for what you believe in, you, you, you're at an advantage, see, I'm never gonna fight when I'm wrong, when I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
Right.
I ain't got no energy, I ain't got no oomph.
Right, um, so, one of the things that you are fighting for is to get a big, uh, a bigger area for the kids to be and hang out, kind of, add an amphitheater. Let's talk about the idea first, about what you wanna bring to Bristol Borough.
The idea of, what's missing in this town is this, like, when we talk about, it, it used to be geared towards people. The, the reason why people love Bristol, like you found out, is the people, right? It's the people that make the town.
Exactly.
So, everything that we talked about growing up was about our athletes, about our people, like, it doesn't have to, we had, I mean, we had a, we had a pro baseball player, we had a, a Tony Award winner, this dude Chris Gattelli. We had, uh, Jeff Mantow in Bristol Borough, who's a, not only just a professional baseball player, is the connections that he's made and willing to bring back to the borough that they, they cut him off.
Right.
And it doesn't make sense to me, you know what I mean? And now we got you, who you, a professional fighter, that lived in the area, your dad was a world champion, you're kinda, like, these are the things that excite me, right? What don't excite me is I never get excited about, uh, a boat dock that I'm never gonna use, right? And, and like, people, or I don't get excited about when they, you know, they put new street lamps in.
Right.
They look nice, but that, that don't mean nothing to me. I wanna know with the people, everything that they do is geared towards one part of town. And it's that way because, I hate to say it, because that is the influential group that is running town.
Now, you said there's four wards, are they divided by political affiliation? Did you have to run in a, like a, a political party?
No, I ran as an independent, see, this is what happened in Bristol Borough, just so you know. Bristol Borough was a very strong democratic spot, especially in the suburbs and, you know, outside of Philadelphia. So, Philadelphia, I mean, Bristol is the most densely populated place in Bucks County, right? In where we are. And what happened was, we were all Democrats, I was a Democrat. But then, as I started to get older and I start to see politics, as I got involved in politics, to see how things really worked, I realized, listen, fiscally, I'm more probably like a Republican, socially, I'm a Democrat.
Right.
And, I'm more, and like, the way I voice my opinions, I feel like I'm more of an independent, you know what I mean? So, it's like, when, when you get outside the parties, you get a chance to see really who you are, because, like, I don't like to fit in, and I never, like, I've never was that way, I never, I never liked to fit in, just to fit, I was never one of those people.
Right.
So like, to me, is what happened with, the Democratic Party lost their oomph, because it ended, and it reaches out. So it goes to Bucks County, right? So at the Bucks County level, if you have a weak head of the Democratic Party, which we do, because they all connect, Republicans and Democrats, they connect, and they make it sound like it's a good thing, but it isn't. Because at the end of the day, just like how this last election was, the, the whole country's divided for two parties that could care less about us.
Right.
That's the truth, that's the way I see it, right? We gotta, they got us fighting each other, hating each other, for two parties, that guess what? At the end of the day, they're gonna protect their own up top, it's, it's not black or white, it's green.
Right.
They're gonna protect their money and their positions.
And you, you remind me of something that I always say, is that, you know, we have all these people. And you you remind me of something that I always say, is that, you know, we have all these people and the social media. Highlights that are getting upset over politics when uh, more people need to be their own president, need to take more accountability for themselves. Um, I guess in that way, I'm a little bit Republican. That's what they say, um, but I believe that, um, you know, self, uh, I'm kind of an independent in that way. Where I don't wanna hear any bullshit from this side. Um, I just want the right shit to get done, um, and it's a shame, cause at the end of the day, we have tons of children out here. That, yeah, they got, you know, the the trash is being picked up, but, oh, they have nowhere to hang out, they're hanging, you know. They're jumping out, trying to touch cars. You know, they're they're throwing eggs and rocks at cars because they're cramped into the highly. Populated area, and there's no designated areas for them to go. Um, and you're trying to build a a amphitheater, I don't know how the plans are going, but this was your idea. Um, make the basketball courts a little bit better, um, where we did that public cleaning. Um, and you were complaining the whole time saying that, uh, Tim, you shouldn't have to do this.
No, you shouldn't, no, listen, nobody should have to do it.
You know, the borough should be doing it, um, those are the kinda things that, you know, you're fighting for. Um, there was also a big controversy over a big purchase in the borough. Um, that's not benefiting uh, the residents as much, and and it's the ice.
That goes hand in hand, and that's what I'll talk about that when you're ready.
I'm ready now.
Alright, so like, the way that's connected is this, so you have, and this is what drives me crazy.
My great friends worked there. Lisa McVay. Um, and uh, Mike McVay.
I know that name, yeah.
Yeah, they 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 uh, run.
They run it, yeah.
They run it. And they're members here and everything, we love them. They had nothing to do with it.
Oh, yeah.
I'm glad that the ice hockey rink is still around for them to have a a a job.
And I'm gonna tell you, this is, uh, here is the the concern, it's, it's never. That people who are working, it's always gotta be the person that's in in control, that's that's the authority. Figure, right, is, they're the ones that's always the situation, so to talk about that situation, here's the situation. The situation is borough residents, and this is what people, spent over eleven million dollars for that skating rink, right? Eleven million dollars, so then they turn around, now here's the thing about it, that this council, including myself, had no idea. That it was on the block, that it was being sold, there was only one person. That was the council president that made that deal, not only sold it, negotiated a deal. For over four million, so what did it start at, did it start at five, did it start at? Four and a half, so.
Nobody knows.
Nobody knows, so here's the thing about it, and on top of it, he has a non-disclosure agreement. With whoever he's doing the deal with.
So they can't say anything.
So, that, now, here's the beauty of it, how can you sell a public asset? Without, without the community, the elected officials in the community that do it, so now. So now they had eleven million dollar property that borough taxpayers. Have paid.
Well, we're at a.
A seven million dollar hit. So a seven million dollar hit, but on top of it, it's not just the idea that we took a seven million dollar hit, because. The the way that it was ran, it didn't benefit the community. I could, uh, maybe there's three people in Bristol Borough that ice skate, cause it's an expensive hobby for people, and. People in the borough, as much as they don't wanna say it, let's speak what it is, and there's seventy five. Between seventy five and eighty percent on kids in this borough that are on free or reduced lunch, so they ain't gonna have. They're not gonna have the opportunity to go ice, ice hockey, go play ice hockey, now. The other part of it is, I understand that it wasn't all this council's fault, because it was the previous council that wound it up buying the second ring. So, but it doesn't matter, this was three years from being paid off, so. Once this is paid off, now we have a community asset. You know what I mean, that we could use, now you get somebody who runs it, like Mike McVay and his family. You have them run it, but we take a rank, let them run one rank.
Well, that's that's what came, why isn't there more of a community center, uh, a place where these kids. There's a lot of African American kids here, who could benefit from learning how to ice skate and play the game of hockey. Um, and probably win some championships.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Why isn't there, um, a community uh, driven center there?
Because, the truth, I don't mean to cut you off, the truth of the matter is this, and people go, oh, yeah, here he goes again. The truth is, the people who are in control of this town don't want it. They think that recreation is great here in the borough, they think it's great, they said that at a meeting.
Yeah, um, for me, it it just, I want them to know that it's not easy. Um, for the business owners to take that brunt on, um, because if you're talking about. Uh, recreation being good, you're talking about regular people putting it together. Me, I can only offer so many free memberships, you know, I I can only do so many public charity events. Um, it needs to be run from the top. And then trickle down, um, it's not really fair for us, the people, to hold a brunt of all of that. Um, and with that being said, we got it on our back anyway, we're gonna try our best to do it. But if they would run programs alongside of me, help me out, help me help the community. Help the ice skating rink, help the community out, um, you know, the the school gymnasium, I know there are other people around that are doing charity and stuff. Like you mentioned Lovelace. Help us out. We're we're out here putting Bristol on the map, I got people from Doylestown that come here, people from South Philly that come here. All over the place, New Jersey.
I'm gonna, listen, and I'm gonna lead you down the road, I'm gonna lead you, you're leading me to all these roads, and I'm gonna help you. This is what's happened. They did a great job branding the town, right, you had.
Beautiful.
Listen, they did a great job branding it, and what's happening is all that positive stuff that they wanna do, and I was, I'm fine with it. But when it is fluff, it's all gonna come out at the end, it's all, and what happened is this, you have people. That were in this town, that are good people, good money, a lawyer, another, uh, uh, a big wig at another company. You had other people who were involved, that had money, that had influence, and guess what those people want, they wanna say. People with influence want say, they don't want, listen, they're not coming to Bristol to follow the rule. Of one person's law, listen, the reason they're successful because they got great ideas, because they know how to maneuver, they got discipline. They wanna make things better, and this is what happened, Tim, this is what happened, so, when these people. Hit a brick wall, when they needed help dealing with a specific issue that made their life miserable living here. When they've, when they made a a public announcement, and they came out and they tried to get some help, and it was ignored, so then they had to make their. Their their issue public, that got handled in such an unprofessional way at a public meeting. Right, that these people, guess what they do, if you have the means, this is what happens, because it happened to deal with. The council president of business that he owned.
You almost said a name.
So, it was a. Yeah, it was a, it was a property that he owned, and guess what, he wants to make sure. That that rent is paid, so he'll do whatever it has to, make that person happy, and guess what? The people who bought into the town, the people who bought in to the brand that this group was selling. Found out in a quick way, that it has nothing to do with the town, you're gonna do what I ask you to do, if not, tough shit. That's the reality, and guess what they did? They packed their bags, sold their house, and moved.
Right, so, basically, that sounds like, you know, pay for play a little bit.
Oh, not a little bit, it is. Yeah, that's what it is, yeah.
Um, and and, you know, you are a council member of the borough, and and this is you saying. Look, this is what's going on, uh, being authentic, uh, letting the people know.
I'm gonna make it even clearer for you, Tim, I'm gonna make it clear for you. When you talk about, listen, pay to play, corruption, all those things are all cute words and things, but I'm gonna tell you, this is exactly how it plays. And the weird thing about it is in politics, nothing's illegal. I've learned that the hard way, and this is what's happening, if you look at the group that's in power, right, right now, in this town. Right, they're all paid for by this one PAC, which is a political action committee. This political action committee is run by the council president, and the soli- our borough solicitor is his treasurer. Part of that PAC is the majority of council, and in that PAC, you have everybody that works for the borough. Pays into this PAC, so you got our engineer pays fifteen thousand. You have our auditor that does the audits pays five hundred. You have any business that does any work, any electrician, any plumber, anybody gets work. They're paying into this PAC. Cause they have to.
Don't get stuff done though.
That's the problem, but that is, that is the issue, so. Who are you gonna complain to, because it's not against the law, but you have all this money, same thing that we're dealing with on a national level, you got money. How does that make sense, like, I have my auditor. Paying five hundred dollars, why is he going to do something?
Against.
Yeah, I wanna, see, to me, I.
Conflict of interest for the regular citizens, uh, to have that happen, it kinda reminds me of a situation, um. With Don King. Um, and how he used to make his son the manager of the fighter, so the fighter. Would go to the, you know, Don King's son, um, I can't think of his name right off the top of my head, um, but he would. Go to his son and say, look, man, I think I'm worth this much, how can the son go to the father and say, look, man, I think you better give. Uh, this fighter, you know, five million more, how can he fight on the behalf of him when he's in, the dad is the reason why he has the job in the first. Um, so that's what I learned about conflict of interest, to see that, um, there's more Don King. At a political level, I, and you know, like I said, in the opening. I haven't sat down with anybody. Anybody else, anybody else, you're the only person, oh, well, outside the borough, you know, um. Brian Fitzpatrick, he came in here, uh.
Well, just so you know, Brian Fitzpatrick paid over fifteen thousand dollars to Ralph's PAC, and he's a Republican.
Right, oh, I'm, so. This is what happened, you know, uh, uh, opening day, I'm here. He shows up for the, you know, for the pictures, you know, and and, yeah, yeah, um, I knew who he was. But in the mix of me doing everything, you know, I'm like, I'm happy that a congressman would come to something that I developed. You know, um, but now my wife, she's mad that we keep getting the robo calls. And and everything like that, but I'm also the kinda person that. If Don King came back and 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 had an opportunity for me, I would at least sit down and hear what he had to say. See how authentic it was. Um, because business is business sometimes, you know, and and somebody might negotiate one thing one day. Next day, you might be able to, you know, work it out, um, and sometimes when you fight people. You gotta put that aside, that was the fight. Let's get back to the business. You know, at, um, or you might not ever get anything done, I'm not talking about a useless.
No, you can't, listen, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say that that is absolutely the truth, but the reality is this, and this is what I tell people all the time, if they care to listen. Is that when you're in the majority, so we have, there's eight people there. Six of those are on one team, two are in the other, those two, just like the rest of the. Other five, cause only the sixth one gets anything done. Those people that have been in the majority in the east ward have not completed any initiatives. On their own, and they're in the majority, they could get it done. In the west ward, again, those are things that are getting done by the one person. They are just, these are all just pawns. And that's the truth, people all this, people get mad at me, it's the truth, I've done just as much, which is nothing, and I admit it. Because there's nothing to get done when you're in an autocratic system. One person's idea and that's it, if you go against it, though you, like right now, I'm the only person up there ever talk about recreation, right? So now, to kinda, to kinda stunt what I'm trying to do over here. Right, at the, at this.
Yeah, well, why you talk about.
Yeah, is that, he joined up with the school board. And now they are in cahoots, cause he wants the one piece of property that's on Buckley Street, that was where the old school was. Since this one person, our council president, wants to keep this whole area so he can build, right, that's what he wants to do, he there, he wants that to be. Houses, right, take up more precious space. In a community that has the least amount in the whole county of open space and rec- and ability to have free space, uh, open land. And now you have, they they wanna take the recreation idea. And move it to Buckley Street, which is in a residential area.
Is that behind the elementary?
Yeah, on the side of it, so you know where that one house is.
Exactly, exactly.
You know, it looks like a haunted house, right across the street, that open field. So now you got people, again, now that is my ward, the north ward, so I already have. Everybody on that street and that area complaining, because there's already no parking, they wanna put more things, it's already perfect here, this is centrally located. There's not in a residential area, it's open space, it's beautifully set, right at the historic canal.
I call it the sports district.
Everything's here.
Basketball court, I'm here now.
Yes, and and then think about, how beautiful that big, so now you have the ability, and that goes back to the rink, so now. They cut off the ability in three years for us to use that as a community, right, and we lose seven million dollars. Now let's fast forward, we're gonna spend over four million dollars buying all those houses that I grew up in. And the next street over, Chestnut Street, over four million dollars, when it's said and done. They're gonna knock all them down, so they're gonna take four million dollars again, that of our taxpayer, this ain't a grant, this isn't, anyway, grants are our own money anyway. Just from a federal or county, but this is taxpayer, Bristol Borough taxpayers' money, four million dollars are gonna take, and they're gonna sell that. To somebody in some LLC or some covered up, whatever it is that they're gonna do, for pennies on the dollar, and they're gonna build houses. When they build those houses, they're going to, they're not going to be able to repay that four million dollars ever, right? So to me, it's a cost of of living, right, it it's quality of life, so if the borough spends four million dollars to do that. Let's put at least another million dollars and let's create something here for the residents. Essential park is what's needed, everything right now in this town is geared towards Mill Street and that area, and that's it. Who comes through the middle of town, let's show off the whole town.
I mean, only the Little League baseball players come through, um. It's residential here, I guess, um, but across the street, uh, you know, it's great, I I run the loop, I run the Bristol loop. You know, you 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 see the football players playing football and all that, if we had the amphitheater.
Yeah, oh my god, yeah.
And then when I had the boxing match, again, I brought people from all over, and they came to Bristol Borough, um. And I and I really like Bristol Borough, um, the police officers have been nothing but kindly. Um, you know, and and again, the business owners, the building that I'm in, Fred Baumgartner, he, nothing but, but great. Um, eh, I, just a great place to be, um, you though, you chose not to teach here. Now you didn't choose, you didn't have a choice, did you?
Well, I I I put in an application, yeah.
You're a teacher though.
Yeah, yeah, I put in an application for Bristol Borough, and here's the thing about it, luckily. I got hired in the sham, because in this area, when you talk about politics and they go, politics always, no, politics in this area. Is dirty, dude, is is it is, it's bad, so it's like, you you are expected, it's like they keep you in. Just, it's like the mafia, they keep you in because they want something, listen, we brought you in. But I expect you to get me all these votes, along everybody in your family, or we gotta, I mean, there's like four other people in this job. You know what I mean, so who are we gonna give it to, and that's the way it works, that's the reality, so like, to me, being out in the shamaney. Opened up, thank God, thank God, but back then, I wanted to always be in Bristol, I I always wanted to be that mentor, that's somebody that's gonna. You know, pick up the community, be that next person in line that, you know, to help generate, you know, the next.
And and I want people to know that you do do that still, you know, me and you both collectively have helped kids. Be a part of the gym, and you know, you take on that mentor role, you know, people see you, matter of fact, um. Dave Brown, uh, I think he might be the original person that I got your phone number off.
Yeah, absolutely.
And and you, he said that you're a big help in his life. So when people were seeing you on social media, uh, you know, they they not really understanding who you are and how much that you really do. So when people were seeing you on social media, uh, you know, they, they not really understanding who you are and how much that you really do. You had a full-time job, council member. And you're out here mentoring kids, you know. Are there any causes or anything that you're a part of, any, any groups?
Well, my cause is right now, and I just talked to like, you got a great group that's in the area and they all don't live in Bristol. But they're all connected is you got Antoine Lovely, you got Dante Reeves. You got uh Morris Derry and you got you.
Right, right, right.
So you guys are all doing the same thing. All, it's all positive stuff that is not about a reward. So like as I got older, listen, I started to get a little bit bitter. And angry like, these people should know who I am, why am I doing this? I'm doing this to help you. Like, and I started to get mad at people and I'm not that type, I love people. I'm a people person, so I had to look back and sit back and go, listen, this ain't who I am, this is not who I am. I can't get frustrated with these people, let these people be, I'm just gonna be me, I'm not gonna worry about. If, if I help somebody that is talking bad about me, I, I just happen to help somebody that's talking, I don't care. You know, so at the end of the day is, I'm not worried, like, I'm not worried about people.
And you got your own family?
Yeah, that's what, listen, it's all I'm worried about.
You know, you got your daughter. She's into music now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Were, were you into music at all?
I love music, but I was terrible, yeah, but I love, you know, my guy Sam Cooke. I was born by the river. In a little tent. And just like the river, I've been running ever since. That sounds good at the Red Rocks, I play that shit at the Red Rocks. My sons out there, we went out there, that's a great place.
Yeah, I, I always wanted to go out there, um, on a road trip.
Let's set it up.
Wild the Red Rocks, uh, but you know that that clip is gonna be what we're gonna use for the promo, right?
I'll send you the video of it.
But the reason why I also, that, that was one talent I didn't know you had, but the reason why I brought up. Basketball earlier in the episode too is because I see you with this pro fender.
They had a pro fender, yeah.
Yeah, what, what is that?
What it is, is it's a, it's a training device that simulates a closeout defender. She has a coach, right? I'd never like to me, I never had, uh, I never told a kid, I want you to go up to the tallest guy and shoot over him, right? Because the, the ba- the game of basketball is so fluid and it's always moving, so many variables. So like I came up, my son could shoot the lights out. Could shoot, man, just natural, not, not that, I was never a great shooter, he just had a natural stroke. And he started, I started to see, he used to sho- show me some glimpses of, alright, this kid could be alright. So his hardest thing was when he wasn't wide open or he started to play against longer athletic, more athletic kids where hands was in his face and he's putting pressure on. He would just not shoot. He just wouldn't shoot, so I wanted to come up with something as a dad and, you know, somebody interested in, in helping him, you know, get better. I just went on the market looking for something and everything is the same thing, it's stationary. And it's stupid. To me, it don't make sense, like, because as a coach, you're never gonna like, it's just a, a very, it's just another form of a dummy or a cone. Where mine was, now it's mobile, now you're gonna read everything, it's gonna be game-like, cause not every shot's gonna be contested. But now you have the ability to roll it out and simulate game shots. So like, and I always look at it in the sense of, anybody that I showed this to, right? That are basketball people, when I say basketball, I'm talking about the best of the best basketball people, Pat Summitt. Bob Hurley senior. Tim Hardaway senior. Kevin Durant, uh, Jay, Jay Wright. Uh, like, when you talk, like, these people see it and love it. They see and love because it's nothing out there that does that. Because everything is, is about shooting when you're open, this, this is just wasted reps.
So what it is, is, is it, what, what is it made out?
It's a silhouette made out of this plastic that's great right now for the COVID. Cause it's antimicrobial, so you have the ability to just wipe it down, you know, it's, don't have no material on it, it's just. Like a, a cutting board material.
Right, right, I got you.
So now it's cut out in a silhouette and the silhouette is actually a local dude that was a great player around here, his name was Sherman Brittingham. Sherman played in the chaminie, wound up playing overseas, that's his actual body that I cut out, his silhouette. So it, it moves in increments of three inches up to like seven, three. So you have the ability to adjust it to six foot, five, eight or seven foot. And now you have the ability to roll, adjust, so now you're able to get, you know, game shots.
Your invention?
Yeah, my invention, I got a patent on it.
And everything? If somebody was a regular person, uh, they could purchase this? Do you have a website?
Yeah, there's a website, yep, it's W W dot the original pro fender, P R O, like a pro. And then fender like the guitar.
Right, right.
I gotta say it all the time, cause there's a cat product.
So to get back to, you know, the area and, um, Bristol Borough first. What would you like to see change in the council and how would you like to get that achieved?
What I would like to see is just an open conversation, right now it's so far like. They, they don't want the majority of, you know, they don't, they don't wanna have open dialogue. Because open dialogue means they have to listen, like, and I say this because the type of person I'm going, if you say something to me. And you be- back out of, I'm gonna blast you. That's, that's, I don't, I don't accept it.
Word is bond.
To me, right? And the older I get now, I watch people, th- there's not many people liked anymore, so like, that's why I got my five, you know, they keep rotating in and out. So, like, I, I, when they tell me something and then they don't do it. And there's no way for me to let them know that I'm not okay with it. Then I let them know. So when they put some phony stuff on Facebook, they trying to do all cute stuff, like, oh, this, no, 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 no. This is what happened, this is what was said, this is what you didn't do. So stop telling people this is what you did, cause it's not true. And then all of a sudden you get this, Facebook block, Facebook block, Facebook block, Facebook. Listen, people don't like the truth, listen, I'm the first person to tell you, one thing I, I'm not as a hypocrite. I'm not a hypocrite.
Right, 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 right.
And, and I'll never be one because I know what it, uh, uh, I'm not gonna give somebody the ability for them to say something, I am who I am. And I'm a live, I'm, that's how I live.
And then that's how you got on the board as well. Your success comes from being who you are.
I just wish the rest of the, the rest of the wards would see it.
You know, they'll see this. You know, what made you upset, um, or what makes you upset and what drives you. And that's what's really good about, you know, today in age, you know, we call these eye thugs. But it works on the, the other way too, we can, you know, cut out the middleman, we don't need anybody, we can put out our own content. Can see, like I'm saying, you should have your own podcast. Definitely fine with Jordan getting as much work as he can. Um, but talking, you're making me think about, you know, you need to have a debate right here in the gym.
I would love it.
Find somebody that, uh, doesn't agree with you and, and you guys, I, I'll just step back, be the mediator. Get one mic over here, one mic over there, or.
And you say that in a funny way, I don't know if you're serious, but I'm telling you now, if it would open up for debates. I try to do it all the time, I tell people all the time, I say, listen, I'm the only one on here on a public forum. Not protected by these rules of, uh, of council or whatever, I'm on a public forum telling you.
Talking directly to people.
Directly to you, who else is on here? You guys over here that wanna say stuff, you're supporting somebody who's, who's not doing what's in your best interest and you're supporting them. Co-sign on it for what reason? I don't know. I'm on here and guess what? They blocked me and I tell people all the time, I would love to sit down and talk with these people. One-on-one, like regular people, I'm, I was friends with these people, it's not personal to me.
From a fighter's standpoint, you know, uh, people wanna wait until either you're too old. They wanna wait till you're too old or when they think they got you beaten and that's when they'll let it happen. Um, you just gotta keep sticking up for what you're sticking up for, you said what you wanted to change in the council now. For the borough residents, uh, what would you like to change for them or what would you like to happen, uh, for them?
What I would like to see is, y- you have. This area of recreation, this is what I say, the center of town. Needs to be something that takes care of recreation for everybody, right? It's not just for the kids, you have the ability to put, now that I'm getting older, like we talked about. I'm not gonna be, I can't play basketball no more. Right? But I love to compete, I'm a great connect four player, you know what I mean? One of the best. So like you have just like little small tables, like when dudes down the city, they play chess or they're playing checkers or whatever. Just to sit and have the ability to be able to connect, compete at something that ain't gonna break my knees or my back. Still get to talk trash, you know what I mean? Have fun doing it. And I get to watch kids and other people, older people enjoy themselves, like to me, my, I get the most joy out of watching. Kids play. I do.
They, like, what you're describing to me is a little bit like Falls Township Park.
Falls are great, I like that park, yeah.
What, dog park? Park there, um, soccer fields and all that kinda stuff, um, and they're busy, they even throw events there. Probably raise money that way, actually I did an event there, um, to get exposure for the boxing gym. They do have First Friday here, but it's all on Mill Street. Um, a lot of the events are catered down that way, so I kinda, I, I can envision. Being a runner that runs past there exactly what you're, you know, you're, you're talking about.
And think about, not just that, just think about the events, not just daily. Recreation where you're enjoying watching kids play and you, you know, you're kinda doing something. You have an amphitheater, you have those canals, you have parking over there at Septa, right? So let's do some events, cause some of the events that they do over there were great, you bring in some food trucks. And you have, you know, you can have some music. You know what I mean? You have some.
And then it doesn't mean that we gotta take away from Mill Street.
No, there's no takeaway.
Having double the events, you know.
Know what it's like, it's like when you have, eh, when you have a couple great restaurants, they don't take away from each other. They help each other. Same thing if you have stuff that's going down the river and you got something in the middle of town. That brings more people in the town, guess where they're gonna go? They're gonna have to eat, they're gonna be able to see, they're gonna see more of the town. And guess what? When you bring in people and, and you do, now here's the, here is the tricky part. You bring in people that see it and love it, but when you bring them in, you gotta take care of them. You can't, you can't say, do what I'm telling you to do, enjoy my rules, enjoy the way I set it up for you or get the hell out. In it, you know, I'm, I'm being very general and, you know, kinda being, but that's the reality, like to me is. My goal is this, when I have somebody that's new in, coming in for business, I'm going out of my way. To help them. Going out of my way, that's what it is, I'm not breaking their stones about, uh, uh, electrical certs and this and that. I'm helping them develop through that, this is what you have to get done, here's a packet, let us help you. Let, let's get somebody to show you what has to get done, let's turn them on, and that's what we wanna do, but it's the opposite. That goes on here.
Do you have an option of running for a higher office?
Uh, no, I have no, listen.
Do you have the option?
Of what?
Maybe running for president of council.
Oh, I'm glad you brought that up, cause this is what people don't understand, is that president of council. Alls he has to do is win his ward, right? So he's in the south ward where he's done a lot of favors, he has a lot of influence. He'll always win that south ward because his south ward's protected in the sense of, he had a very strong following. And then the people, a lot of the people are renters in the, in his ward, the south ward. So he don't care that the renters, cause they don't come out to vote. They focus on the pe- the votes, that's what they do, everything's about votes, who can I get out to vote? If they're homeowners, I'll help them out, get them out to vote, renters, I ain't coming out to vote, I ain't doing nothing. That is the message that has to happen, renters, people who rent in the borough and it's like sixty forty now, sixteen percent renters, forty percent homeowners. Somewhere in that area.
So the renters need to be more invested.
Yes, how do you invest them? How do you get them invested?
Want them to be long-term? More long-term stability, uh, for them to wanna keep their roots here. You know, it, if any of your other colleagues wanna come on the show. They're more than welcome to come on the show, more than welcome to say, you know, their part, how they feel. Um, it's gonna be really hard to argue with community-driven ideas. Um, I feel like my success is because I'm community-driven, your success, people love you because you're community-driven. Um, I, I, I think it's gonna be really hard to argue against that, but also it's always good to keep an open dialogue. And, and maybe, you know, we might be able to get some things accomplished together and if not, you either on the train.
And, and this is, and this is where it is, to me, like I talked about. It's turning into like, I'm at this next point in my life now, where I'm doing what I'm gonna do to help people. That's regardless, listen, if I can't get them to change their minds on the council and they're gonna put houses there. And if the people are okay with it, that's what they're gonna get, they're not going, they're gonna lose those opportunities. Right? And you're never gonna have that ability to get them back. And as we were saying before is, all those council members, once, once you're a councilman. It's the other council members that appoint the president. That's why those other positions are so important, because it's not about what, what they say, it's not. An autocrat system where he's putting himself in there, he's running for that office, it's an autocrat system. Only because those other people just go along with him and make him, appoint him. As council president, yeah, so like to me is, they, he'll, he'll say things that's hilarious. You're just jealous of me, you're, now listen, I'm not jealous, I don't even wanna be council president, all I wanna do is which fair and which right. That's all I wanna do, open it up. Let's do what's right and you can't do, he won't even allow one of his own maj- people in his majority to do it. It's control. You know, and power, listen, power is a very powerful drug. More power, listen.
You know, power and egos, um, are two big killers, um, of situations. If people can put those two aside, then, you know, things can get, you know, we can get things done in this world. But I've experienced it, you know, you, this ain't gonna be the last time you experience it, so we gotta figure out ways to fight through that. Tony, we're gonna be wrapping it up here, but before that, I want you to get a closing argument. If you want to, and I want you to also tell people where they can, you know, find you.
Well, the, I don't really have a closing argument because everything that I s- I say, I say on a, on a regular basis. It's all, I got the same.
This is good stuff.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, to me, it's just, it's a, that's who I am, it's just, it's not a closing argument, it's not an argument at all. I see things a certain way, things are black and white, there are only a few things that are gray. Right? And those things that are gray, you should be able to talk about, but black and white, you know what's right and we know what's wrong. And when you have people that can't come within themselves to say, this is wrong. Because this is our compadre, this is our partner, it's our team.
It's our father.
Yeah, exa- our heart in heaven.
You know, I understand.
Yeah, but that's where we're at, and like to me is, I was always the type of person, I'm sure you were too, is whether, if we went out, right, if we go out. With a group of people and we all have friends that start trouble or whatever. Like I would have friends that would start trouble because they know that they, we would have their back, whatever, and I would tell, say, listen, if you start with somebody. And they're gonna whip your ass and you, listen, I'm not getting involved. I ain't gonna let nobody jump you, but I'm not getting involved. That's how I am, so whether I'm on your team or not, right is right, wrong is wrong, stick up, say something. Principles, get them.
That's it, alright Tony, so we can find Tony on Facebook, Tony Devine.
Yep, Tony Devine on Facebook.
You on Instagram?
I'm on Instagram, still learning Instagram, Twitter, I'm trying to figure out how to utilize it.
Yeah, you got to, you're a councilman. Profender.
Yep, the original, the original pro fender.
Dot com is the excellent, uh, piece of equipment, you have it on YouTube.
Yep, YouTube.
Um, and other than that, come down to Bristol Borough, you might bump into them, we're gonna be doing a lot of business.
Yeah, let's go, I'm looking forward to twenty twenty-one.
Charity and stuff like that, um, it's always a pleasure.
Yeah, always a pleasure, Tim, glad you're here, my brother. Yeah, I'm glad I was here. Yeah, I'm glad I was here.